Call the kind of planning and zoning commission regular meeting to order. First item is Paul Coll, Alza.
Here.
I can't.
Here.
System.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Kevin.
Here.
And Lauren. All slaves. Everybody's here. This item of business is approval of minutes of previous meetings, November 12th. Minutes, I'll entertain a motion for approvals. Minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second. Does anyone have any corrections? This one, I guess meetings have been had minutes package you did done?
Yeah.
Okay, so no one has any. Vote on a motion to approve the minutes as written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next is public communications. Does anyone on the commission have anything? Report? I did receive a letter from the town clerk stating that I have not been reappointed to the planning and zoning commission following my term expiring.
Oh, really? I didn't catch that.
Wow.
Is that what that's about?
Yes. Had a big session last Tuesday.
Crash with clarification on that?
Yes.
So is there a reason given for that?
No, that. I didn't really want to get into the.
No, I understand, but I'm just asking because the public communication got brought up.
No, what there's a committee of the council that's sole job is to go over appointments to ABCs.
Correct.
And in there, it specifically states they have to act on reappointments. They did not act. What they did was they, the chairman asked for.
A motion.
A mo- no, he read the motion. Asked for.
Ask for a second?
A second. And nobody seconded. The end.
Right.
So when it goes to the town council, they don't get the recall report. They only get the report of those people they acted on. Which to me.
Sure.
Is not quite correct.
Right. Can I ask a second question? It could be of staff as well. My understanding in the charter, which didn't happen last time, was as an alternative alternate. If someone is in that same status, shouldn't I automatically be asked if I'm going to be a full member?
Well, what, no, what the town charter says, I would continue on until somebody replace is put on to replace me.
Right.
So point of clarification, it's not the charter, it's the town's appointment policy. It's the, it's the appointments policy, not the charter.
That's in the town charter. That the person, and if an individual's on a commission board and the term expires, they stay in that position.
Sure.
Until somebody is put on to replace them. That's a charter thing.
Yeah.
The other thing on the town council, how they work the review by a committee.
Yeah.
That is a town council policy. It's on the town website.
Yes, I, I meant Kevin's point was that's in the policy, not the charter.
No, the.
His point is in the policy, not the charter.
No, but the policy is the one that says.
The chairman is supposed to elevate the recommendation for the alternate.
No, if he.
With the vacancy in the policy?
He, so he only acts on applications. The town, the, the committee acts on applications.
Correct.
So when he gets an application, he should act on it. But in this case, he did not.
Correct.
Act on, or his committee is group of three people. So why they have a motion?
We're, we're talking, we're talking two different things.
I understand it now.
Yeah.
Right.
But.
Or it's supposed to.
It's supposed to work.
But to replace a full-time member such as if Jeff, this in fact, not could be on anymore and there's an opening, you have to apply.
You have to apply.
You don't wait for, you know, someone to call you at home or something. You have to go in, fill on application for a full commission. I found that out years ago when I was looking through.
And, and the same thing, when somebody's term expires, they have to have a form filled in.
Yep.
Got it.
Yeah, good.
You know, the chairman would do that. But for the chairman, you know, filling out a form, which requires chairman approval. I've never heard of a case where the chairman has not been reappointed. I don't know why. No reason given. I talked to the the chairman of the town council committee.
Yeah.
And he had no explanation or wouldn't say anything. And he was silent when it was brought up at last Tuesday's meeting.
So it's statistical aberration, as I would call it, right?
I would cause if there's something going on.
No, I understand that, but it is an aberration if we don't, none of us having served on many committees, I presume we've never seen anything like that. So we're viewing, I'm viewing it, it's my words, as a, as an aberration. So. Okay, thank you.
I'm looking at the policy now. It does say if there are, when a vacancy occurs for a regular member on ABC for any reason, the town clerk shall notify the chairperson of the ABC. If there are alternate members serving on the ABC, the chairperson shall discuss with the most senior experienced alternate as to their interest in moving up to the position, provided this does not result in a violation of minority representation requirements. If the member is interested and the chair recommends their moving up, the chair should complete a reappointment questionnaire. So you would do the questionnaire for, say, Kevin, if this continues, whomever, right? And the same procedure as described above, six point two, three and four shall apply, which is the standard procedure. So I, that's where I think the technical next step should be.
That's all well and good, but that's.
But that's not how they proceed, right?
How it works.
Yeah.
But that is the policy.
Yeah, it all sounds nice and logical, but. Anyway. My next book.
Does anyone else have any, does staff have any communication? Does anyone in the public? Where's Jennifer?
Oh, they'll be here.
Do you want me to? Because if you move past, you probably don't want to go back.
Yeah, why don't we take a little recess? I don't particularly care.
Are you funny with that recess?
Just for, oh, he gets back. You need to get a quick, yeah, water, so it stopped.
I don't think that that letter she sent, she was within the corners of the policy either. But I don't think the letter that the town clerk sent was within the four corners.
No, it's really, if you really look at it, it's not accurate letter. It's just about a three or four sentence. I thought it was poorly, poorly written because it's not until the town council holds a meeting.
Right, that is true.
Because there is something in there that town council can change what they were presented. They have the right thing to change. So they've been in the.
Are we on recess now?
Re.
Oh, yes. Jennifer.
Does anyone in the public wish to address us tonight? If you saw you stand up to the podium, state your name and address.
John Goodrich, thirteen fifteen River Road in Mystic. Just want to say we're next door. Jeff's supporting you. I hope the town council does the right thing and reappoints you. As our signs say, twenty plus years of experience matters. You know, you all do a great job. I appreciate everything every last one of you do. You know, I'm not putting a board down on the historic distribution, for example, but yours is very technical board. And experience matters. And Jeff, I really hope they do the right thing. Get my full support and I want to thank all of you for everything you all do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to us, to address us other than the sign?
Just a couple more, just coming down the hall.
I, Steve Lima, a hundred Ocean View. Just getting involved in all of this and support you, Mr. Pritchard, and really unfortunate how things have worked out and I'm hoping that they reconsider.
Good evening. My name is Russ Nickerson, AD Island View Avenue, sixty year member of Mystic. And I want to see Mr. Pritchard's even handed handling of all the proposals for town land use. I would like to see reinstated and I'm sorry, all this underhanded stuff is going on. Thus, oldest and tires.
Daniel, sixteen front street in Noank. I just want to reiterate what everybody else has said previously. Thanks very much.
Anyone else who's addresses? Wow. Just say your name and address.
Six Pearl Street, West Coast, Connecticut. We were so appalled, Jeff, that some, a lot of us obviously, you know, got together to try to do something to help the situation out. And it's important, I hope everybody can hear me, because it's not just Jeff that they're trying to pick off this commission. It's all these guys here, including you, Hal, Kevin, Lauren, you haven't done anything bad yet, but if you had, you'd be gone too. And the thing is that you guys have done such a good job over the years for us, especially the last few years. Starting with the Mystic Oral School debacle and then the data centers and the short-term rentals, which are all issues which this town council did not want to go the way that you made it go. And you did the right thing for the, for a citizen and voters. And we want you to know, we're really deeply grateful for that, which is why we didn't forget when we found out that this was going on, that we should come up here and support you and at the very least tell you how grateful we are for all of what you did. The problem is now with the technique that they have found, which is basically to bury you in the, in the committee for personnel and appointments by either not seconding the motion or recusing themselves, which they did with John Goodrich, or one, and then not putting it in their report. That's against Robert's rules. They should be filing a full report with the town council. That Robert's rule says that. Good, bad and indifferent. The fact that they didn't second the motion to reappoint you, Jeff, that should have been in their report and it should have been pushed up to the town council agenda and it should be, should have been at least considered by the main body. That's in Robert's rules. A subcommittee is not supposed to withhold information from the main body. And this is what they've started to do and they think it's so clever, you know, because they picked off John Goodrich for the Historic District Commission. Then they've picked you off, Jeff, and they would start with who's next for reappointment here? One of you, yeah, okay, you two are next. We already had enough trouble getting you through the net last time. You'd be picked off in a second again. And they'd pick you off one by one, hoping that we, the public, are not going to notice that we're losing the best planning and zoning committee that we ever had. I mean, you're saving our skins. You're saving Mystic, you're saving Groton. And we need you to stay right in those chairs where you are now. Which is why we're making all the fuss, writing letters, talking to the day, making phone calls. We're not going to stop bothering them until they stop doing this foul thing that they're doing. Because they want to put people in place who will agree with them no matter what. You know the drill. You've all been around long enough that you've seen that. You know, we don't want people like that. We want people like you. You know, who look at things objectively, reasonably, sensibly, you know the rules and you do the right thing. So I'm not going to go on forever, but this is like really, really important to us and it's really important to save all of you. We just cannot let them do this to all of you. And you know, if you have friends who can write letters already saying that they really object, object to this process, the process has got to be changed. It's, it's, it's not according to Robert's rules. Of course, they could change the council rules to say, oh, the committees don't have to report anything back to the council. They can do anything. This council has been doing that. But we, if you hear of anything, we're organized, you know, the usual, usual suspects are organized. And let us know how we can help you. Let us know how we can keep you in your seats. And thank you for your service. It's really heroic at this point.
So anyone else wish to address? I think that was a good summary.
Funny, Mary Ellen Curlong, fifty-seven Fish Town Lane, Mystic, Noank and Groton. We have been watching for the past couple of years while the Rules Committee changed the rules very often on the town council. And they worked on various things, found, oh, no, that one didn't quite work. And they finally put this one in where they're not waiting to move people. This time is Mr. Pritchard. Next time it'll be whoever you, of you who replaces him. This is the way it's going to be. And they're not going to stop. I would suggest strongly that people look at getting some legal counsel on this. The town lawyers have looked at it and they had some problems, I believe, with the language that was in the rules. They will. We need a real legal judgment on this. Otherwise, they are, as Jen said, they're going to pick you off one by one and there's nothing going to stop them. And we cannot, as a town, afford to lose your experience. I, I know that you had to learn many, many different rules for planning, for zoning. They have always been complex. And you have done it and done a good job. We cannot afford to lose you. Please do everything you can to protect yourselves. Thank you.
Anyway, they're a little shy, but they're on the right side.
Thanks for your support.
Ian Thomas, twenty-four Jefferson Drive. Full disclosure, I am a Board of Education member and also a spouse of councillor Bordelone. But I'm speaking primarily as just a private citizen tonight and, and I just want to express my appreciation for Mr. Pritchard and your service on, on, on this commission. I hope to see it continue. You know, perhaps some way that we can make that happen. But I just also want to express my appreciation for all of you. Historically, over the past many years, there's been many challenges and I've found this body to be fully focused on due process, due diligence and being a fair arbiter of any given situation. And your rulings have been sound, thoroughly vetted and represents a true consensus of this body. And that's a great credit to Mr. Pritchard, the way that he runs this commission. I've, I'm impressed and I've been taking notes and trying to, you know, hold myself to a higher standard whenever I have the opportunity to run a, a small committee of any kind. So I, I definitely wanted to echo the sentiments of, of my fellow neighbors here, longtime compatriots now. But, you know, all things being what they are, I mean, like they said, this will continue. This, you know, the, the majority of the council are doing what they're doing. And, and that seems to be the tendency of things. So the only way to change that dynamic is to focus on changing the council. And that's obviously, that's not a role for you all, but you know, I think it is, it is time for, you know, Democrats in particular to take some responsibility for what's been put up in our name. That it's a democratic, hundred percent democratic town council, but I cannot cannot adequately express my words in words, my frustration with the difference in approach. I always felt that like, you know, the Democratic Party in, in some ways like represented that, but now you know, that's a whole other conversation about, you know, how pathways can go astray. But long story short, I'm just going to say that you know, just for the public knowledge, my public announcement here, taking the opportunity of the, of the podium that you know, I did serve on the Democratic Town Committee as Chair of the Nominations Committee. So I'm aware of the process by which it takes to find democratic candidates and have them come forward and present themselves to the committee and then, you know, face the committee vote, you know, present their case, you know, and, and perhaps receive the endorsement of, of the town committee. And then failing that, there is also, I'm very well familiar of how to manage a primary situation. If someone should really feel compelled as to their case for a seat on the council. You know, again, as I said before, I'm, I'm Portia Bordelone's spouse. So you know, when she faced her primary in twenty twenty-one, that was that was pretty much a two-person show. So we got a lot of experience. And I got a lot of experience. So I'd be glad to coach any candidates out in the public that are interested in running on the, for the Democratic slate. And any other, you know, oh, I'm always a fan. One thing I've learned in my, in my short time trying to serve as a representative is that it's always better when there's more voices in the room. You know, that like, it doesn't matter the party, doesn't matter, you know, the background. What matters is the insight and the genuine intent that someone can bring to any given body. So I just want to again, appreciate you all for your service and, and definitely look forward to seeing you continue your work. Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else?
Thank you guys for all your time.
Thank you guys. Hey, back to business. Next item is subdivisions, Mystic Hollow Resubdivision Sandy Hollow Road.
This is for your souvenir.
Thank you. Or bond reduction.
Right, as, as noted in your packet, this is a six lot subdivision on Sandy Hollow Road approved in two thousand eighteen, I believe. This is the third lot that has a certificate of occupancy. So it is the third lot asking for the return of a bond for the driveway. The developer chose to allow the individual property owners to put in their driveways rather than doing it all at once. As you know, in your packet, it's recommended by Public Works that the bond be reduced.
Does anyone have any questions on, on this item? I'll make a motion then to reduce the public improvement bond for the Mystic Hollow Resubdivision by one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moving second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion for the boundary reduction. All those favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, next item is site plans, S I T twenty-four zero zero twelve Mariner Patio Expansion. The applicant would like to make a presentation. I think you can say.
That's right.
Wow, right on. So that's.
I have an extra planning case that's here for anybody to see it, but you guys won't see it over here. We've got one more.
Yeah. That's a question. So typically we see who's also on the phone. We don't have that.
No, I know that who updated and doesn't have it, but I've been checking.
Okay, great. Thank you. The format just looked different. Thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Seamus Moran, a professional engineer and independent, H and H Engineering Associates of Mystic. And I'm representing the applicant, Twenty-One West Main LLC for the project located at Twenty-One West Main Street in Mystic. You know, much better as the Mariner, the Mariner Restaurant. We are here for a site plan application. It's CAM exempt for what we're proposing to do. But we are here for, I'm going to try and be as simple as I can tonight is to formalize a patio that they were authorized to have behind the building during COVID. They're trying to formalize what that was that since expired and they're trying to get that back. So they're asking for a permit for a new patio behind the building. Right now, the existing conditions and demolition plan. My, my sheet is a little dense, but I thought it was easier to see everything on one sheet. The existing conditions plan is here. You see West Main Street is on the top of the page. The Mariner and some outdoor seating, as you know, and the sidewalk is at the top of the page here. This is the body of the building and then you get to the back of the site and there are three parking spaces now that the Art Association is using. They don't have an agreement to use, but they're there and there are parking vehicles there. And as well as two above ground propane tanks. And there's a generator, I'm sorry, a transformer located on the property. Now, what we're looking to do is remove the pavement in this area. Now, this is also the area where the, the outdoor seating was stacked during COVID. And what we're looking to do now is remove one of the above ground tanks. So the tank that is here, we're looking to remove that tank. Remove the pavement and replace the pavement with paper surface to give it more patio feel. Around the outside of the patio, we're looking to planter boxes. The planter boxes that are in the front of the building are shown. They have a photo that's on the plan here. They're going to replicate these right now in the front of the building. They're alternating. So for every one of these, one of these longer ones, there's a narrower, taller one. And they're looking to do that around the patio in the back to enclose it and keep it away from the parking area. This patio area, this is all connected. This is all flush. There's the existing Art Association pavement and the gate is here. This is flush with the concrete pad, which is flush with the papers, which is why we're looking to separate the seating area with the raised, with the raised planting beds. The planters are going to be planted, as you can see here, they have some seasonal plantings that they put in the planter boxes and they change those periodically based on the season. Right now, they have some more evergreen type plantings out there. They're not always evergreen. Sometimes in the summer, they have more color. But they, they switch those out periodically just to keep it fresh and they're going to maintain exactly what they're doing in the front planter boxes is what they're proposing to do in the back planter boxes. In terms of lighting, they had some lighting during COVID, just string lighting hung up on like hooks about ten feet in the air, ten feet at the hooks, which drapes down and draped down between. And what we have shown here are those string lights. So what we're posing is stainless steel posts every few feet with the string lights in between just to illuminate the patio rather than having any significant freestanding structure, freestanding fixture back there. The fixture, the, the string lights that they had before, I don't believe they had covers on them. We're proposing to have a shield. The spec sheet that, or I guess the detail that we have shown here is from a commercial company. But I couldn't find us an actual spec sheet of it, even I tried everywhere. The name, the name of this company, they don't actually have a website. I think it's I think it's foreign, but they don't have a spec sheet that I could find that says it's full cutoff. Unfortunately, I'm trying to find one. If it is not full cutoff, we're going to call the supplier and get a, try and get a spec sheet from them. If it's not full cutoff, we're going to find a similar structure, black, same diameter, that will say full cutoff and we'll replace this with a full cutoff fixture if this is not full cutoff. Right now, it's, obviously it's horizontal. You can see that it projects out. Obviously, it's horizontal, you can see that it projects out um beyond the light fixture. I just don't know if it's officially full cutoff, so. In terms of parking, uh, we're adding, when we add the five, I'm sorry, it's about five hundred square feet of patio space. Um, that's an additional eleven tables or so and twenty-two or so um. Seats, which increases the required parking from a minimum of seventeen to a minimum of twenty. In the, in obviously in the M D D District. We can request um hundred percent of the parking to be supplemented with the Mystic Art Association Parking Center. They are part of the validation program. They're looking to maintain that in perpetuity. Um, and we're hoping to offset the increase in parking with the uh validation program. I believe, so there's also, there's consistency with the site plan objectives. We included a narrative in the application, section nine point four, I'm sorry, nine point five dot four. I don't know if you guys care to have me read through all of those. I mean, it was part of the package. I'm happy to go over them if you need me to, otherwise you have it been in the package since the beginning. Um, otherwise, I can just go over the the few comments from town staff, um. We spoke about the application, and there's just a few that I'd just like to go over. The full cutoff note, um, I just mentioned, or either find a cut sheet, or they get a cut sheet that says this is well cut off, if not. Like very similar fixture, um, that will be full cutoff. Um, I discussed how the lights will be hung, uh, the planters, as I mentioned, the type of plantings are are seasonal or mid-transition. The pavers, uh, we're looking to do, originally the detail was, I have a. A detail that I can use for previous papers or impervious impervious papers. Just because I don't know what's under the ground back there, and I don't know if there's any conduit or anything that could potentially be an issue with infiltration. We're just showing that to be a impervious um paper situation, which is just replacing the pavement, we're not adding impervious area. It's just replacing the pavement with a paper material. Um, seasonal, oh, I'm sorry. One of the big items that I haven't discussed yet is seasonal parking. What you see on the um, in this diagram here is in the winter months when we're not using the patio. What they're looking to do is just reestablish the pre-parking spaces on the paper surface. This is, like I said, this is all flush. And these these um lines are not painted lines, but rather curb stops to delineate those parking spaces, as you see anywhere. Those curb stops. Um, have a rebar, half-inch rebar that sticks through the curb stop, that you don't see it sticking out of the curb stop, and it goes into a sleeve. In the in the um patio, just like the poles are along the sidewalk now, you know, we see the uh. The American flag poles uh all along during Memorial Day, Labor Day, um. So those, that same thing, there's just gonna be a sleeve in the patio that the rebar sticks into to hold the. To hold the wheel stop in place very much, so it's. We discussed maybe not even having that, but we felt it. It's important to at least show there's, we're not losing the three parking spaces year round. We can add it back, you know, in the winter. Mystic is pretty busy year round now, so having three extra parking spaces is better than not having three parking spaces, is how we felt.
Which which way did the cars park?
So right now, they park perpendicular facing in, and that's to be maintained. So right now, they they'll drive in here and they face uh inwards towards the propane tanks over here. Um, and that's essentially, it's exactly how it's shown here. We're just looking to. The three that we're removing, we're then going to keep in place uh in the future, in the winter. With curb stops rather than straight.
So the planters.
Steve, can you evolve your questions?
Yeah, the planters are temporary, um, they're movable, they're not, they're not bolted into the ground or anything like that, so. In the winter months, so just move them, there's a temporary storage area that we're we're showing to those planters. Behind the parking spaces, so this area will be open uh for parking um in the winter. Last but not least, patio access, as I just mentioned, this is all flush, so if a wheelchair or. Um, an ambulance, not an ambulance, but if somebody had to get back there, emergency um responders had to get back there. This is all flushing, very, it is very easily accessible. Um, soil erosion center control, when they remove the pavement. I don't have, I don't have silt fence shown on here, I just added a note that says during the pavement removal, silt fence shall be installed. Uh, we don't expect migration of soil in this plot area, and there's not a lot of it, but we'll install silt fence anyway. Um, just to prevent that from happening. And then the air outdoor sales, I originally, in my um column for existing, I originally had the five hundred square feet. For four hundred fifty square feet of outdoor space that was contemporary in existing, and we just asked to remove that, so. That's uh, that's been reflected on the table, and I think that was it for the comments. At this time, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, we'll have staff make a presentation for this.
Thanks.
Yeah, so um, as you might have uh seen in your email today, this was kind of a late uh revision of this this plan. There was nothing substantive uh that really changed. I think like Seamus spoke about, a lot of it was just encapsulating some of our conversations and some notes and some. Some finer details. Um, the planters, as he stated, are gonna be stored. Um, in those off months, there were bollards that were were added to protect that that existing propane tank. As Seamus stated, there were, or there are two propane tanks, above-ground propane tanks. Initially, in this uh plan, there was gonna be an underground tank. Um, I think there was some concern um around, you know, the logistics of filling it and things like that. And so there's actually been a reduction in existing propane tanks and further protection of that. Um, and delineation of that from the seating area. Um, the, I I wanna know another thing, the the planter boxes themselves were selected. Um, not only because they're in existence in the front, but also we're concerned just with some of the grading. Uh, that it might pull uh towards that southern end of the the patio area. I think he's covered just about everything, um. Yeah, not too too much else.
So open it up to the uh commission for any comments, since you're. I don't count it, Steve, I'll start with you.
I'm ready. Um, I couldn't see how the um, the cars were going in because you had the planters there. And you seem to go in this way, but moving the planters, I get it now.
That was it?
That's it.
So did.
No, I just, I'm concerned about the cutoff of those hanging lights, but we're on that.
Uh, it seems fine. On the only, that was parking spaces that they designated like employee or public. And does one of them have to be handicap?
So there's, the three are existing now, so it's a good question. The restaurant. Doesn't have any specific designated parking spaces, other than the three parking spaces on their property that the Art Association is using as their own. So I I. I think the the accessible parking are probably part of the Art Association or out the street. In terms of this particular use, having park accessible parking spaces, these are not accessible spaces now. Um, so legally, I'm not sure how. I think I'm. I I guess.
I'm just asking, I don't know the answer to that either.
Mess um with the Art Association parking there without any legal documents, but. They don't have any, they don't have. The the uh Mariner does not have three spots designated to them in the Art Association, uh, Art Association parking lot.
Get you, no, it's all shared, so I guess that uh. Is it open to the public? Could I park there?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not like designated, yeah, no, I realize, but um, it's not, okay, that's all, I just wanted to.
If I can just interject, Deb made a good point that the, there are handicap spaces within that Art Association parking lot that likely satisfy. Any uh requirement for the Mariner itself. And and you can see, if you ever look at aerials or just see how that parking's oriented. It's, it's a little bit slapdash right there.
Like it might be better to designate them employee parking. I don't know, but it seems like maybe then someone parks there and then they're just there and they're not backing back out, but whatever, I'm not, I have no opinion, I'm just.
I'd be willing to bet that they become by default employee parking because they're.
So convenient.
And when I went and visited uh earlier this year, that's the way it seemed like it was functioning currently.
Seemed like, yeah, okay, that's all, thank you.
Start with a question. At some point, we were talking about, oh, he said, I'm okay with this, so it's gonna sound like I'm not, but. So at some point, we were talking about at least having a moratorium on keep dumping more spaces that don't exist in the Art Association. Especially, this is a case where we're, we've done without them for all through COVID and we lived through it. Uh, now we're gonna be. Six months out of a year or so, removing spaces, so we're relying on having more spaces. At the same time, removing some spaces, so we're actually causing a six-space deficit. We're going to be doing something about, at least having a moratorium on just saying, okay, it's fine to. Get into about, into a program as opposed to saying, no, find something someplace else. I think we all were, you were kind of agreeing, it doesn't need to be on site, like on the stony's inside, it can be elsewhere, but. Someplace else, add some space, some spaces to the. Or is that something we just still need to come up with, but I know we were talking about it, but it kind of dropped.
That is zoning text amendment. If you truly want to do a moratorium on this, you have to have reasons and then a deadline. Usually it's to come up with other regulations.
Okay.
Um, if that's something you guys want to pursue, we can, we can do that.
And I think there's probably more of an ability to do it now that, at least for the time being, on the other side of the river, we have a great big new parking lot. Even though it's twenty dollars a day, but it's, it's there. It takes a bit, a bit of weight off of us. But we know that the spaces aren't there. We know that it fills up every day during the summer, so it's. It, it doesn't really work, it just pushes the problem someplace else, and we've been okay with it. And one thing I want to make sure, because you're saying this will return to parking spaces half of the time. Therefore, unlike so many other outside spaces that we have, no enclosure will ever be permitted on there unless it's removable. Okay, because we've actually had enclosures happen, and then they become, then it becomes like a building, but. This would have to be, if it's a closure, it's gotta go.
Yeah.
All right, so if there's ever enclosure, it must also go seasonally. And not extend the season, whatever that is. Because, because you said. I I think I'm okay with everything else. The thing about the the lamps, by the way, I think, I don't know if we want to put in a motion, but just. It can be a technical item, is that the drawing has to go, uh, we should have a line through it, because unfortunately. It actually says on there, shield, and that's not a shielded light, even by any explanation, so. If there was no drawing, you'd be better off. It's uh, it says on here all versions of color, but except that you showed ones that aren't, and that's, we need something more.
Don't. Don't want to say that they aren't, and I was reviewing the comments. Obviously, this is a user. I'm in a dark sky compliant community, and you were approved, but and the community loves them, H O A. Okay, I can't bring that to the table, I suspect.
Well, what I'm seeing there as a filament that I can see, which means it's not. So by definition, it's not, so. So therefore, it it can't be on there, or has been lined through or something like that, so we'll should be on there. Unlike the ones that were provided, that it it shall be done, otherwise it sounds like they are.
Yeah.
And and Hal, that is gonna be a condition of the.
I see it says that, but I want to make sure that I don't want to just put more on the zoning. All right, I'm good.
Helen, do you have any? So I'm just following up what Hal said. My lament, of course, in Mystic Art Association, is that we don't have an algorithm as far as the scale. Of something being full, the funnel is too full. What the applicant has provided here is hundred percent legal, it's it's our regulation, right? So it looks good. But without a um. Parking plan that we worked on, the town of Groton residents paid for three years ago, but no implementation by the town council. Right? Not by this commission. We're the ones who worked through it, we provided tremendous content. We can't have um the continuing algorithm that we continue to slug in Mystic Art Association. Um, parking, because it doesn't work, it's it's in our neighborhoods, it's very clear. So I have no issues with this at all. The only thing that I have ashamed is, I I didn't pick up how many months are gonna be summer versus winter.
Um, very good question, uh. Exactly. I I don't know either, it's really weather dependent, and when they're out there, um. October this year was warm, I'm sure they would like to keep it in October, but if next year October's thirty-two degrees and there's snowstorms.
Sure.
We're not gonna be using it, so I. October or November, I'd say is when they're going to end, just like the other patios in the area, but. I don't want to say they're done in October, October one, when on October fifteenth is, you know, sixty-five and sunny, uh, and they would have a. A really.
Sure, but there's no plan for heat lamps or any of that stuff?
No. Um, not that I've been told that they're doing heat lamps, it's strictly seasonal, um. If they do have a heat lamp, it's just to elongate the customer that's sitting there. When it gets cold in October, when it goes from sixty-five to thirty-five, no matter how hot. And it's that, it's not to, not to extend it until eleven o'clock at night. So if there are heat lamps, it's just for that transition from dinner time sunset to evening.
Well, I have no further questions, Mr. Jack.
Okay, Lauren. Mr. Chair, can I just make one other thing? And it just has to do with your report, just for our record. Is that one of the things you have in here is site plan objectives, and you go through what our plan of conservation development is. And you just listed a whole bunch of things, and I I hate to say for the record that we'd say, okay, I agree with any of that. It's okay, we have no problem with this, but to list out, you listed carefully all these items like. We asked to create a transit center, reinstitute Mystic Shuttle Bus, expand Mystic Seaport, these are all great ideas, that this has no effect on either way. So you sum up that therefore this meets all those things, and it doesn't meet them, it just doesn't bother them.
I remember writing this, and it was easier just to have the whole excerpt rather than dot, dot, dot. Word, 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 dot, 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 word, word, word. So it doesn't meet all of them.
It doesn't meet, it doesn't meet any of them, it just doesn't counter any of them, so it just, so that's, that's a different story. So a simple thing would have been there, it it's not against any of the actions there. The way it's written makes it look like, good job, you've helped us with a. Within your twenty-seven intersection, no, you didn't, so, all right.
If I can tag on Hal again, the other side of it, as we move forward, the ability to reference. The plan of conservation development within an applicant is actually.
Oh, it's great.
It's a great one, right? So, okay.
Yeah, when when it's applicable.
That's a judgment. You're observing now, which is great.
On on this patio, how does the drainage work so you don't collect water in there when you have a super high tide?
Which is flat.
It's a flat, it's not, it's, it's not slanted, so it will drain out.
Well, there's obviously some pitch in here, but undulating, it's not in any one direction really, it's just a apartment that's flat. Um, the topography, there's some spot grades. It's for a second, there's some spot grades on here.
While while he does that, it does generally grade towards steamboat.
So there is.
There's a. Four point something spot created, three point nine, four point three.
You have to have magnifying glass.
It might be going.
I, I have the survey, I have the survey, if you need, you want me to grab it for you?
No, just as long as it has something, that's, I don't.
There's a little bit of pitch away from the building. I don't have anything beyond that to know if it goes back up to four point three.
No, but that's the point.
Yep, there's a little bit of a slight pitch away from.
Yeah, because they may, they they will move over time. And so. Is your, was it, once in a while, you will have high tides that get in there. Remember with Sandy there, the, I'd see on the front of the buildings.
It's under.
On the main streets.
Yeah.
Not common. Now, on on these planter boxes to the step, how, those things are not gonna last forever and ever. So how do they get monitored by our, the town to know that they have. Are built like this with with gaps underneath them, I mean, they're raised. Does that?
I I mean, we'll have to do an inspection before they start using.
This, no, no, but ten years from now, I'm worried, I'm thinking about ten years from now. How does that work? Do they have to go back to this plan to put no ones in?
Or. So, right, so.
Or do they get something from the building?
Years from now, I mean, I doubt that we are going to say you have to do that.
Not, not.
Have to allow stormwater to flow off of the patio, where frankly, I think the owners would want that to happen.
Well, oh, yes, I know, but.
Yeah.
That, that, yeah, that was a specific conversation that Seamus and I had about the selection of the 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 boxes to Deb's point. Yeah, I don't know if we have enforcement mechanisms, but I think at least having gaps between the boxes. Yeah, I don't know if we have enforcement mechanisms, but I think at least having gaps between the boxes themselves.
What you have on the plan is fine, but how do we know that they stay there forever and ever, because. They're going to have to be replaced at time. Do they require a new building permit to do that?
No, I I imagine it will be something.
You'll get completes for.
Exactly.
You'll get wet feet, the waiters will complain.
Right, and I could imagine. The owner is going to want to allow the water to drain off.
No, they, yeah. I think that's how I think that's controlled.
Mister Chairman, one question, um I know this isn't site plan related, but I um. Does this go back to the original COVID hours of operation or?
That's expired, so anything related to that temporary permit expired with the executive order expiration, so. Um Seamus worded it very well at the the outset, but this really isn't a patio expansion as much as it's. Uh for a new patio, right? Because this isn't a temporary patio as it stands now that that permit has expired. Right? And so any hours of operation would have to comply with existing outdoor patio uh hours of operation, which what is it?
Ten.
Ten o'clock, yeah.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I I don't. Yeah, and in any temporary patio with the COVID uh executive order would have had to comply with that same.
Actually, I think they allow them to be open in eleven o'clock.
So that doesn't grandfather in with this.
All right, so just, okay. All right.
Anybody have anything else? So anyone have a problem with the proposed motion?
Nope.
And it's been seen one.
I assume you've seen it, they see any issues. Okay. So I'll make a motion then to approve site plan application S I T twenty four dash zero zero twelve. The Mariner video expansion twenty one West Main Street with the following modifications. One. That all proposed lighting is full cutoff and compliant with section eight point five of the zoning regulations. Two, any revisions to the plan required by Groton Utilities, the Fire Marshal or any other. Outside agency shall require additional review and approval by the Office of Planning and Development Staff. Or the Planning and Zoning Commission as appropriate. Three, technical items raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. By Mike, does anyone have any comments on the motion? Hearing done, then we'll vote on the motion for uh the site plan for twenty one West Main Street. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously.
I thought it was worth it to say anything before now, but it sounds like you're going through something. Thank you.
Yeah, so many phone calls.
I thank the owner for hanging in on this one too, Seamus. Yeah, there's a lot of reaffirmations that are taking place. This owner threw it all. Really hung in there in downtown Mystic and they've been a, they've been, in my opinion, a very good tenant of of Mystic, so. This ring, so if you could pass that.
Okay, no, no business. No business, no applications. You have any new applications? No. Referrals, we have the CBA referral for Sutton Park.
Right, so um the Parks and Rec um is obviously planning the um. The basically a revitalization of of Sutton Park. Um as part of that, um under the public recreation section of the zoning regulations, they're required to keep public recreation. Fifty feet away from a residential, residentially zoned um block. Um as well as providing a twenty five foot buffer to the residents or the boundary. Um they're asking for variances of both of those things citing that um, you know, this this park was developed a long time ago. And frankly, the shape of the park is odd, um and and that's their justification for asking for the variances.
So anyone have any concerns with this, any comments?
Well, how how close are they going?
So there are existing, there's existing vegetation there, but they are definitely within the the active portion of the recreation area is definitely within fifty feet. Of the property line, um I don't have a measurement, um and they're, they are not doing a twenty five foot buffer as required by the regulations. Which would be, you know, twenty five feet of of evergrain material, um. You know, one of the nice things about this park is that it's integrated into the neighborhood and and people have gaps in their fences and and actually go through. To the park rather than going around to the main entrance.
Thanks.
Um we're car, requiring these separations probably would, you know, make it separate from the neighborhood.
But they're not changing the existing geography of the park, so this is really just.
That's correct. That's, I mean, they are adding a bike path into the neighborhood, they're adding adding some amenities like that and they're refurbishing some of the fields. So they are doing work.
But this is really just great. It just creates a record of what is existing, saying it's all like, it's hope for doing.
Well, they're actually formalizing, there's a path that goes between two sets of houses and it ends, and now they're actually going to make that like path continuing. This is what it takes, so.
Yep.
And Deb, do you know if there was any public comment, who neighbors?
I don't know, the hearing is tomorrow, um but I, the file does not have any any letters.
That goes to the Z B A.
Yes, tomorrow.
All we're doing is our.
Right. Yeah, you'll you'll see it as a site plan in January.
Okay, so we have no, no comments on that then. Now we have a zoning interpretation for residential life care community, does. That was in your packet, does anyone see any concerns?
Nope.
Was that, okay. And we have a. Commission reports, reported chair. Got my hand exercised this morning by signing off two sets of drawings. Which has been, yeah, my hands have been bothering me, I have trouble writing, so I got my phys- physical therapy today. Actually, good bit. And we have our holiday party coming up on Thursday.
What time is that?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five.
Deb, do the other um commissions have similar plans?
They they don't, they've never expressed an interest in it, so no.
Well, it really started with planning and I think it was after our last meeting in December, we got together. Down at the Seahorse or it was. We just did it, it wasn't any formal thing, we sort of more formal.
But there were years when they were invited.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, we did it.
It's a big crowd.
But we didn't have, uh we had zoning invited, yeah.
Been our little powwow that we had next door in the interest of, I was just wondering if, you know, any of the other boards, you know, have a invite.
They they don't this year, but we can, we can re-up that if you guys are.
Yeah, it's in a social environment.
That's really just a social.
Oh, I know, that was one of the things that came up in that meeting was more.
Because the last couple of years, we tried, tried and no interest.
Right.
Very little. Oh, better order more food.
That's what it was, it's like, you know, COVID, right? And then just started up again, so yeah.
Yeah, maybe I just send an email out. At least we try. Well, sometimes it's good. Oh, and we did have our, yeah. Committee of Chairpersons meeting for the first time in a year and a half. Not much came out of it, really. We used to have it more often.
Yeah, it was.
I thought they're still useful. I don't think this one was.
Well, this was to bring other commissioners up to speed on what's going on with Groton twenty thirty five.
Well, that was, yeah, but we've had them before for, just so people know what's going on. In town, or getting people together so they know who to talk to.
Yeah.
And the council should have representation so they're aware. Where what's happening. But not much came out of this. Except for our mooring situation. Harbor master, you always have. And we haven't had cog meetings either for a long time. I should call him, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, because the person used to hold them, then he left. One other person took it home for a meeting, I think. And maybe the the chair of the of the uh planning commission. He is elected to that position. And it's since we never have a forum, it's almost a position for life. Maybe that's why we haven't had any. But it was interesting to listen to other communities what they were going through.
To add to it, from the staff, that we have a half credit coming up this Thursday, um which actually looks like a pretty interesting. Um conversation, if you haven't taken a look at that yet. And at some point, could Shannon just um send out to commission members just as a request to ensure that we stay within compliance?
Sure.
Um just the wording again.
Sure.
That would be great, I love to see those guardrails, because I like to embrace it.
And and maybe just to see where you all are at, I think you've got another year for that two year certification, yeah, okay, sure. It is now, it's every two years you have to do four hours.
Where we are in the guardrail.
Yeah. I'm good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but no, it's important.
Okay, report of commission, does anyone else on the commission have anything to?
I uh did attend the town council meeting last Tuesday and I spoke in favor of Jeff's nomination. For all, see what good it does.
I also attended that meeting and spoke in favor of Jeff staying on the commission.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see what happens.
Was there feedback from the town council when you spoke, Michael or Lauren?
Yeah, they don't respond.
I just wanted to ensure.
But when I think Portia started raising some questions for the, the chairman of the uh council committee. His mouth was zippered shut.
Okay.
Which I was surprised.
Thank you.
Nobody talks in the council, except Portia and the mayor. No, reporter, reporter staff.
Um the only thing I have is just a reminder that there's a special meeting next week on the nineteenth. I appreciate you guys, you know, making the effort to have the special meeting, I expect. There to be a lot of neighborhood interest in this Fairview application, so it's just a really good idea to have that be the only thing on the agenda. Sure.
Well, they, we expect to have a public.
I think, I think so, I think so, I think the, you know, it's a public hearing, so folks within a hundred and fifty feet of the property boundary have been notified. Um they certainly.
Big property.
It's a big project and when they applied for a variance that they ultimately withdrew, they certainly had a lot of folks coming to the meeting, so I expect that we will as well.
I suppose it's helpful that it's Navy housing that's on the hill behind them.
Well, not, not just Navy housing, as a neighbor within a hundred and fifty feet of their property boundary. Up the other hill, yeah.
Inside of you, so that, no, no comments there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it matters, but I did receive a booklet from Fairview as a neighbor um that included. In like information on this, this proposed development, so just on the record.
Okay, and we got a report for C F P C A attached. I don't know if anyone has an N R A S P report and application update report. Does anyone have anything else? So entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconds, moved in second.
All right, very good.